I'll call the Powhatan County Joint Engineering Supervisors and School Board's meeting to order. Mr. Cuff, I guess you would need to call your board to order also?
I will call the meeting to order. And our roll call, let our roll call reflect that all members are present.
All right, at this time, I'll lead us in the invocation, and then if Mr. Norby will lead us, it'd be greatly appreciated. Mr. Norby?
Thank you for allowing us to sit in this meeting and listen to presentations that are going to be here. Please help us understand and do the people's business. Please be with all over the next three days in crazy weather. Keep everyone safe. Amen.
Collective allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a request to postpone agenda or add, delete, or change order of presentation?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Could we please add after, or excuse me, before the adjournment, board comments?
I have a motion to add board comments.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. I guess I'll roll call them up. I will do a roll call, but I'll ask for a vote from the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five. You want to poll your board?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion passes five, vote five aye. So amend the agenda, so we'll call number nine, board comment period, adjournment will be at number 10.
Thank you.
Now can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor of approval of the agenda.
Aye.
At this time, motion passes. At this time, we'll have our first public comment period. Please, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Keep your comments to three minutes if you're an individual, five minutes if you're a group. I've seen no one on close to public comment period. We can now move on to item 7A, the presentation of the school CIP. I guess who's going to take that one?
I'm going to take it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. I think everybody has a copy of the CIP up here. If not, Ms. Wilson has copies for you. Does everybody have a copy?
Yep.
Okay. We're good, thank you.
Anybody need more for that too?
So, the CIP that you see in front of you has been developed over the last couple months by the school board. It has, was approved by the school board at their last regularly scheduled meeting. You will notice that it looks very similar to the CIP that we spent a lot of time last spring going over and prioritizing and looking at different types of projects. But I will go through it with you, the cover sheet, and then if there are additional questions or specifics that you, projects that you'd like me to go over, I'll be happy to do so. And Mr. Johns and Mr. Wilson are here as well if there are any questions from any of the board members. We kind of divided the projects up based on our last set of joint meetings into kind of how they would be funded. The first projects are the ones that were prioritized from the school perspective as part of our process last year. That is to replace and renovate the junior high school. The total of $33,861,000 is there. It does not include the planning and design money because that was appropriated in the prior fiscal year. We also have the funding for the joint vehicle and maintenance facility of $3,656,000. And then we have two other projects that were included down the road to be done in the out years. Pocahontas Elementary for a total of 3.38 million. That's for mechanical improvement, some roofing that needs to be done. As a reminder, that building is 30 years old. The heating and mechanical systems are at the end of their warranty, and it is something that we need to address in that building as well. Excuse me, that's Powhatan Elementary, I jumped ahead. Pocahontas Elementary is the 3.3 million, and that also includes ADA, some electrical improvements, some mechanical enhancements and changes that need to be made to Pocahontas Elementary. So those two elementary schools, again, we've cleared them and pushed them back into the out years as per our discussions last year. And the last item is just our school bus replacement cycle, and including that as we to meet our guidelines on when we have to replace school buses.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt at this point?
Yeah.
Dr. Jones, does the capital that you've just gone through include the things that we've heard of recently about the water and the foundations? The money is in here accounting for those possibilities?
Well, I'm not familiar in terms of the foundations issue. I'm not aware of a foundations issue. We are looking at making sure that we get water for use and fire suppression to both the joint transportation facility and the middle school. We're still at this point evaluating different options with that and costs, working with the engineers on the project. Luckily, Timmons Engineering is the engineering firm on both projects, so we have one point of contact with that. So right now, we're looking at different options and what that would cost, and we did not include that specifically in here, but it may be covered within the costs of the projects based on how much it ends up costing with the final solution that we choose.
All right, thank you. Thank you. That's good.
Okay. I will also say on that matter that we, Mrs. Wyler and I met today and have invited Timmons Engineering to come out to our next joint meeting on February 3rd so that they can give both boards a full briefing of the issue, and hopefully at that point, we'll have a direction on where we want to go in terms of meeting those water needs.
Thank you. Excuse my interruption.
No problem. Thank you, sir. We also have other capital programs. That's the school bus lease purchase. That's the money that was set aside as a recurring funding stream to help with the bus replacement cycle. So since that money is there and is part of a lease, we kind of separated that out. And then we have the items that the school district has taken on the responsibility of funding through money that it is saving through the Capital Reserve Fund. Those are support vehicles. The school board office is there for some HVAC repairs that need to be made. Powhatan High School, which is some asphalt, some curbing, some ADA enhancements, and then just in general, some asphalt and curbing that we need to do in some of our locations. So those are the sum of the projects that we've included for the five years, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody has on any of those. There is a detailed description of each project along with some photos of the project that are available to look at as well.
Just out of curiosity, so the joint vehicle maintenance facility, do you know what the placeholder in our CIP that we had was? Was, I thought it was like 5 million?
Yeah, I think so.
So I'm just curious, is this more of a hard line number that we're able to put together at this time, or was it just, and I apologize if I'm wrong, but I'm trying to find it, and I can't get my fingers on it right this moment, but I'm just curious. I thought it was closer to 5 million dollars was the placeholder, and it's coming in at about 1.4 million less than the placeholder, if I'm correct in the numbers.
So first of all, in answer to your question, we have 4.5 million dollars in the FY 2016 CIP, and in the second response to your question is that this school CIP is only for five years. It's from 17 to 21, so they don't have the prior appropriations in there, which took place in FY 15.
Correct.
And so you need to add into the number that they have, the $500,000 that was already budgeted and appropriated for that project.
So it's coming in at 4.1, 4.1 or 4.2?
We have 4.5 in the previously adopted CIP.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Jones, the, you know, we call it the bus garage as a nickname, but its plan is to have more than just buses worked on in there?
Correct.
And am I correct that sheriff vehicles are going to be worked on in there as well?
That is the plan, yes, sir. The sheriff, fire, rescue, all county vehicles, the fleet that the county has, will all be able to be serviced in the joint transportation facility. Ms. Wyler and myself and staff met today to talk about the scope of that work and to come up with a draft MOU that we'll be presenting to both boards on February.
Please don't use that word.
Yeah. MOU is now four letters.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
An agreement.
Here's one. Maybe not. No, I'm just kidding. Off the record, come on. The reason I bring it up for both boards to understand is, working on a sheriff's car is far different than working on a sedan that the school board, you know, administration staff drives around in. You got some pretty serious computer work done on those cars. They are racetrack ready, basically, high speed, high cornering. Everything has to be just so. They might be ripping down Route 60 at 110 miles an hour in high pursuit. They go out in all kinds of weather. My question then is, are we looking at a dollar figure that includes working on very sophisticated safety vehicles to also include maybe mechanics that need specialized training and all the costs associated with that? Part storage for very expensive and highly desirable for burglars to come in and grab? So I just want to, I want both boards to just bear in mind, there may be some issues there with sheriff's cars that inflate the cost considerably.
Same applies to the fire department.
Bingo.
We've had this discussion on several occasions where we recognize that whatever the joint facility does do, there are going to be significant pieces of the maintenance and repair that you're talking about that are not going to be done in the joint facility, would still have to be done by certified mechanics elsewhere.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think what we're looking at and planning, and the design team has been in contact with Adam Sadler and making sure that we get sheriff's input as well as fire chief's input on what the needs are for those vehicles. But routine maintenance is what we're going to be doing.
It's like an oil change, the sheriff's car goes there.
Oil changes, inspections, tire changes, those types of front end alignments, those type of things, and there may be some that we're not able to do that will still have to be outsourced. Yes, sir.
I was not making that connection. Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Larry, I look at it, we're currently doing a percentage of all these things in different identities in the county from different shops, you know, and it's just a matter of, can you do it more efficiently and save money on the maintenance thing, the specialized things as the bus study was done years ago with the joint transportation facility?
Right.
Address the need for specialty things?
Totally agree. My question was more, have we factored in those extra costs to this number I'm looking at on this piece of paper? And I think I got my answer there, so.
It's not actually extra cost.
It's not extra cost.
It's less cost of the pieces that this facility can handle.
I understand, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Still learning.
Great question.
Still learning. It's less than a year, okay?
Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt, I forgot to do one thing. I wanted to introduce to the board of supervisors, we, the school board has now added student liaisons, a formal position to advise the board and give perspective of students, and they're both here today in the audience. And Aaron, if you could stand up, and Colton, Aaron Hockaday in the snappy bow tie, and Colton Milkerick in the nice tie as well. They joined us at the last meeting and are going to be attending all of our meetings, and they've already provided us with some valuable input from the students' perspective, and we are happy to have them part of the board. So I wanted to thank them for being here tonight and introduce them to all of you.
You're welcome.
Perfect. Wonderful idea. Any other questions on the CIP? So just, so the replacement and renovation of junior high school, how hard line is that figure at this point? I guess Mr. Tucker was trying to get there. So we've heard things that water could, you know, there's a dollar figure attached to that, depending upon how you would implement it, whether you would expand it to help county needs too.
Right.
So we understand that, but I mean, as this thing's coming together, is that something we're going to get an update on and how real these numbers are?
Yes, and some of that will be covered in the presentation to follow by Mosley Architects, who's here to talk about that project. And again, on February 3rd, we'll get an update from Timmons Engineering, who has been in contact with both school and county staff, looking at different options moving forward to meet those needs.
In one of the school buses, I guess, I had a citizen grab me the other day and said, have you heard that seat belts are coming in school buses?
That's always rumored, and from year to year, there may be legislation to include that. Past history has shown that it's been, it hasn't been approved mainly just because of the cost of doing that and the burden that would be placed on localities for updating their school buses. I don't know, Mr. Johns, do you have any other information on that?
This individual said it was a done deal.
Well, my understanding is this is the first year that it has been recommended that buses have seat belts. Just a recommendation from one of the, one of the safety boards, also recognizing that fitting seat belt systems into buses that have to accommodate kids from 40 pounds to 200 pounds is a serious issue since we do multiple bus runs. I don't know how far, I don't think we're a year away.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So, nothing for the existing demobilization of the middle schools in this budget, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Tucker. We are looking to handle that in our operating budget and are budgeting for that right now. One of the challenges we're facing is we're including many of those items in the budget, not knowing whether the project's going to move forward or not. So, but we have put placeholder in for moving expenses.
But not for whatever may end up being repurposed?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. No, sir, there's no money set in this CIP or in our operating budget for what would become of the middle school after 2018 or whenever the new school is finished.
And Ms. Wyler, we've not done the same for our side of the budget, correct?
That's correct.
And I believe our thinking was, is that until that, we have an active committee, as you know, that's working on that and coming up with some recommendations, and it's really too early to tie a dollar figure to it until we know exactly what that building or the recommendations that would come forth are.
So do you, do we see, and this is to both of y'all, do we see that then being on their side of the CIP when it does come forward, or your side of the CIP when it?
Well, as of right now, that building is owned by the school board, so, but that would have to be part of those discussions based on what the uses would be, whether they're county uses or if for some reason the school continued to use the building.
So Ms. Wyler, Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yeah.
So Ms. Wyler, does it make sense for us to put a placeholder in our side of the CIP at least in anticipation of repurposing?
I believe that we should, as Dr. Jones said, wait until the committee comes back with their recommendations. I understand the committee has their second meeting in February, so they are moving forward. So I think we're premature to be putting it in yet. We all know that it may be something that we will have a future cost for, but we don't yet know what that is.
Thank you.
Any other question? I want to say I do appreciate you kind of capturing some things that typically may have been in the CIP, for instance, that y'all now are capturing in your operating budget. I do thank you very much for that, because as y'all are all aware, I invented just long ago, but so far, but I do appreciate you rolling your sleeves up and saying, hey, we're going to capture some of this stuff in our operating budgets as opposed to sticking more on the CIP. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, one more question. So we own some and lease some, and how do you, how do you, how do you decide? Buses, I mean.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Mr. Johns to come up and answer that question. He's the expert on bus purchasing versus leasing.
The answer to that question is simply economics, as to whether we have the money for a cash purchase or whether we need to do a lease purchase. Currently, we have six buses that we are making lease purchase payments on, and those lease purchase payments, we've got two more payments of those to make. And then, we currently have ordered 11 additional buses, and they will be paid via a lease purchase. Seven of those have been delivered already, and we're still waiting on the remaining four. And so that, that's why in the CIP you see 257 for two years, and then it goes to 155 because we've got two more years' payments on that.
So if I'm understanding you right, is literally you trying to juggle the available cash, whether you put it as a lease or whether you put it as a purchase?
I would answer that to say us, county and schools.
I meant you in the plural.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I would also like to clarify that these are not operating leases. These leases are capital leases. It is just a mechanism to purchase the buses, and the school owns the buses. It's just a financing mechanism. It's not an operating lease.
Thank you. That helps. Thank you.
So, Dr. Jones, on the, back to the buses, so it looks like in 2021, you hit the bullet and said, I got to replace two buses that year, then, two big, is that where I read this? What's 2.2 million, supposed to everything else, time back?
It's 11 buses and 12 buses.
Oh, 11, you're right, 11 buses, I apologize. 11 buses and 12 buses. Why so many in one, in one year, 23 buses? Is that just a placeholder?
When we go out that far, it, yeah, I don't know that it's a placeholder. We're trying to capture how, a schedule, and based on the age of the buses and the anticipated mileage that we have on it, we anticipate that that would be a year that we may have to purchase more buses. Now, again, based on the condition of the buses in 2020, and who knows how many of those 24 would need to be replaced, we may be able to delay or defer on a few of them. But that's the schedule that we've come up based on the information that we have at this time.
I apologize for picking up wrong.
Nope. Got you. This is more information than we've had, and it really is helpful. It puts it in perspective and it chunks it out well for us.
I'm glad to help, and we, last year started to try to copy the county CIP format just to make sure that it would be easier for everybody to have one similar format instead of the format that we were using. So hopefully that'll be easier for everybody to process and understand.
So, back to school buses, and I think I asked this question one time, you know, the ridership seems to be down. Typically, a lot of parents take their kids, and, you know, my question was, could you buy up smaller buses? I know one of the things, the ride time is something I heard from people.
Right.
My kid gets on the bus and rides for 45 minutes before he ever gets home, or he gets picked up really early because he rides 45 minutes. So, you know, is there, has there ever been a thought process to say maybe even smaller buses, and maybe a few more? Of course, then you get into the situation of drivers, and the cost of drivers, so I don't know whether the equation's ever been discussed or?
We definitely look at that every year. We look at routing. We, our goal is to have rides that max out at under an hour, and we do have to juggle hiring bus drivers and maintaining bus drivers. One of the benefits of the new grade structure is having the fifth graders, it's an extra grade level at the elementary, is we can probably keep the same routes and add another grade level. That would be more kids on the bus. It would be more efficient. So that's something that we're looking forward to. But it is, it is a challenge, and it is something that we're looking at. We have added some GPSs to buses and some software that hopefully will allow us to be a little more efficient in our routing and cut those drive times down for students. Because we are cognizant of kids being picked up before dawn and being out in the dark and making sure we minimize that as much as possible.
Thank you. Just a question. I don't have any other questions at this time.
Okay, move on to the next item, Mr. Chairman. Next item is to, presentation on the new middle school. You have a bound copy of the presentation in front of you, and I'm going to ask Doug Westmoreland and Stephen Halsey from Mosley Architects are going to come in and talk a little bit about the process that we've used for designing this new building, how it's going, some timelines and next steps, and then also some updated enrollment figures and a few other items to share. So I will turn it over to Mr. Westmoreland.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to bring you an update on this incredible project. We are at the conclusion of our schematic design process. We'll be given a formal presentation to the school board on the 9th, and that will allow us to move forward with the design. Our agenda this evening, we want to talk a little bit about the process so that everybody understands the depth of input that your design committee has had to get us to where we are today. And it has been a really incredible process, and the design committee has been very engaged, and I think that the project has definitely benefited from that engagement by Powhatan school folks. I'm going to let Stephen then talk about the schematic design in terms of site plan, floor plans, and some building images. We actually have an animation as well that'll show you the existing building and how it's going to evolve into the new building. We do have some updated enrollment projections. When we originally did your study, it's actually 2013 projections, and we projected to 2016. Well, now we're in close to 2016, so we'll show you how that is trending and what effect that might have. And then we'll talk about the benefits for starting construction in 2016, and then take, talk about next steps and take any questions. In terms of process, we've been through a number of meetings. We started with programming, and that was establishing the types of spaces and the numbers of spaces that we needed for 1,200 student middle school. We then convened the design committee and had a series of workshops, as you can see, four different workshops in one or two weeks' succession. So this was a pretty quick process, but it was very engaged. We then took some school tours to look at specific areas, some art rooms, some media centers, some gymnasium complexes, some music, or questions that folks had come up with, or how are other folks doing it? We gave a school board presentation on the 3rd as a progress. And then we've had a couple of series, hopefully on the, we've had two, two series of user meetings, and we hope to have one on Monday, depending on what the snowman does. But those are meetings with the individual art folks and music folks and science folks to really bore down into specifics of their spaces. This is a list and some images of that design committee, and you can see in the bold, those were our K-12 experts that we brought to the table to work in small groups with these. We gave them Team Red, Team Green, Team Light Blue, Team Yellow, and Team Blue. And this was groups of five and six of your design committee members working with our architects and civil engineers to, to help us understand and to facilitate discussion about what this new middle school would be and how could it best benefit Powhatan and the citizens. The first design workshop, we really started with some idea mining, some visioning in terms of what overall riding principles we should look at, look for as a committee and as architects. We created a project vision and guiding principles. We started our small group conceptual work, talking about adjacencies. And then we had presentations of those concepts from each group back to the group at large, and began to see some similarities and some consistencies with what each group wanted. This is just a couple shots of what we were doing during that design, idea mining, very interactive group, again, very active group as well. This is what's called a Wordle, and that's kind of taking all of the ideas as discussed, the biggest words, the ones discussed most in terms of what people put as priorities for this project. So you begin to see flexibility, community, pride, technology, green, open. Those were all very, everything on this Wordle is important, but you can see the importance that the committee put on priorities for these kinds of spaces. This was showing some of the adjacency discussions and some of the feedback as the committees presented back to the committee on each kind of idea, and really began to come up with some of the initial ideas at this first session. Then we went away as a design team and came back a week later and had four concepts that we had developed, both from a site standpoint and from a building plan standpoint. So we took those ideas generated in that first workshop and then presented to the committee and then had some consensus discussions of what folks liked about each option and how to incorporate those best practices from each option into the final one. And from there, two building concepts were selected for further development. So one of the things we looked at with the site, we had four different site options and we really keyed in on the circle on the left-hand side being how we wanted the middle school to operate. And, and you recall the discussions of the elementary traffic flow is also very much tied into the high school traffic flow. So we got the opportunity to really solve both of those issues through this project. So we liked the, the elementary solution on the right side. So that kinda got meshed into the final site concept. And we eliminated some for various reasons. At that point, we were looking at four different options. We kinda rejected two and so we kinda selected the one on the left to pursue. But we also liked some of the aspects of the one on the right with the circle around it. So we were, again, not trying to select the right answer, but select the right ideas within each concept to incorporate into the next iteration. So design workshop number three was really about consensus, looking at two site plan concepts, two building concepts. At that meeting, we were able to very clearly and unanimously select the site concept to pursue. And then we, again, talked about consensus of ideas of what was being presented. So option one of the site, which Stephen will present in a little more detail in a minute, was selected to pursue for the site option. It's just an enlargement. I'll, I'll allow Stephen to go through it in a minute. And then we had three options for plans, one of which was eliminated. And we essentially ended up with a consensus of option A with the, one of the aspects of option C incorporated into that. The next workshop then was a further development and further discussion of where we were on the design and the building direction from there was established. We were in option D and E at that point. And D was eliminated and option E was selected and evolved, has evolved into the schematic design. Steven, hold up.
I'm okay. You're okay.
Could you just give on this page where option D is marked off and option E is left on, workshop number four, floor plans? Just give an idea of the kinda thing that knocked option D off the table? Not exhaustive, just an idea?
Well, it really had to do with a couple of things. One, you can see the dining room and the kitchen kinda cocked a little bit at an angle, which created some, some nice things, but also kinda, you know, created some other issues that were problematic. It was really, the major thing was the location of the library. You can see the library is kinda right off the front lobby in the front on, on option D and it's to the side on option E. And, and I think the overriding concept or what led to this was the notion of everything on the left side in terms of gymnasium, dining, media center potentially, the music that backs up to the stage are all what I would call very public functions. So after hours, folks will be coming in. So it really was a clear delineation of those kind of public after hours and then the right side being academic.
Yeah, answer my question. That's one of the general feeling for what you were using as a criteria, knockout criteria.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question too, if I may, since we're, we had, doing a couple of questions here. How much, during these discussions and all the interaction, how much was security taken into account?
One of the first things we started talking about was safe and secure buildings and things like security vestibules and lines of sight and getting kids in a two-story building up and downstairs so that they're not in situations where they can't be seen and that, that the traffic flows well. And the whole thing about the traffic was separating the buses from the visitors, from the staff, from the delivery people. So I would say in virtually every discussion, safety and security is part of that discussion.
Great, thank you.
Steve? Thank you very much. I'll see if this can, it dies on the screen, I guess. I'm just gonna try and get the red line over there. So I'll just go through in a little more detail about some things that we were looking at in terms of site plan solutions. This is an image of the existing site plan. As you can see, there are multiple ways into both sites from Old Buckingham Road. And one thing that we like to do when we have an opportunity to renovate a school and certainly when planning a new school was to start to have clear delineations of traffic so that bus traffic is separated from, parent traffic is separated from deliveries and from, and from staff. So as you can see, this, this network of asphalt, that, our big goal of the project is to try and solve and to clean up. So looking at the, the site plan direction that emerged from the workshop process, we started looking at a combined bus loop. We worked very closely with, with Eric and his staff and bus schedules and is an opportunity for some savings instead of building two bus loops to consolidate the bus traffic in one central access point off Old Buckingham and, and to consolidate bus traffic behind the middle school, which can also be used for overflow parking for events at the middle school and also for after-hours use for ball fields and parks and wrecks and those kind of activities. And then to start to align elementary school bus traffic north and south between the two schools and to have entry points into the elementary school from, from that point. So again, that consolidates all bus traffic into one entry point and exit point off Old Buckingham, which then allowed us to separate staff parking and visitor access and parent drop-off for both schools. So we've got parent drop-off in front of the middle school and a consolidated loop. All that traffic is contained. It's very safe and secure and very easy to understand as you're approaching the site. And we're able to do the same thing in front of the elementary school. So again, parent drop-off is consolidated very cleanly in front of both schools. And then having staff parking to the west of the middle school and to the east of the elementary school in the same general location as it is now, but just to refurbish that asphalt so it all looks the same and is into the same level of quality as the rest of the, the site improvements. We're also looking at trying to utilize where the tennis courts are. Of course, there's some existing asphalt now behind the elementary school. You may recall the tennis courts in the, for the northwest quadrant of the, the middle school, junior high school site. To, to try and move that parking lot up for staff parking, we're moving that a little further north. We're eliminating some asphalt as well along the west side of the site and then utilizing some existing grading, at least in terms of pad, to relocate those tennis courts to that, that area that's just south of the elementary school. There's also existing asphalt to the right, to the east of the middle school entry point for parent drop-off. We're able to eliminate that as well. And also a significant amount of asphalt behind the school, the middle school. We're able to eliminate that as well, which will help mitigate some of the stormwater concerns and some stormwater management issues that all projects have nowadays with the new stormwater regulations. So that's kind of in a summary, it's kind of the, the main sort of talking points of the, of the site plan and the ways that we attempted to, to really delineate traffic and make it a very safe, secure site.
Stephen, if I could just add a couple of points, and this goes to Mr. Nordvig's question. We specifically, the committee specifically, and it was several of the teachers on there loved the idea of having the bus ramp behind the building or the bus loading area. Because, and before it was in the front of the school and people driving up and down Old Buckingham Road, there was just an opportunity for some mingling of, of the public and, and buses and kids unloading that you don't have now. So that's one of the reasons that we put it back there. It also serves the purpose of, there's a lot of activities on those fields after hours and before, everybody parked either in the back or in the front and had to walk around. So this provides some ready access parking to those ball fields, which are heavily used by our various associations.
I like that you're trying to address the, I mean, as I drive by the elementary school and the parent pickups always, they're parking out on thirteen and, you know, they're walking and jumping out of their car and all those things. I applaud you for trying to address that, that, that situation also.
One thing we try to do is, and you've noticed there's, there's quite a bit of queuing space in both of those parent drop-offs. We try to get parents off the main thoroughfare as quickly as possible and try and provide adequate queuing space onsite so that traffic can continue at its normal pace beyond the school property. So we were able to do that in, in front of both of these schools.
One of the issues that, it's a little bit maybe more prevalent with the elementary schools, but in getting the line of cars in and getting in, into a row where they, I'm assuming they drop off as they're along the curb in front of the building. There's a tendency for some people to decide they're not gonna wait in that line and so they will tell the kids, get out when they're in the, let's, let's call it that first area there and then try to go around the line, not wait in it. Is there, are there any countermeasures to help prevent that kinda behavior in, in these plans?
Those are, we, we struggle with that sometimes just because the, the, the routing of, of, of traffic. Some things that we do are, are along the main drop-off, along the curb side or some raised areas of pavement so that there, if, if there's, if we think that those kind of activities are gonna happen, we can provide some clear areas to, to mitigate, you know, traffic along the main curb, make sure it's slowed down through some pavement measures along the way and to use those pavement measures and make those wide enough so that there can be some pedestrian traffic across those. That's, that's one way that we, we do that if we, if there is a tendency to do that. That's, that's really kind of a built way to, to do that.
Yeah, I think whoever is, is designing those areas specifically needs to be cognizant of that and, and within whatever the, you know, codes and, and safety will allow. If, if we can prevent a second line of cars from bypassing the line and getting out, I would advise we do that.
Right.
Comment, Mr. Chairman?
Question, I guess. Looking at your parent parking and drop-off in front of both buildings, is that gonna require turning lanes on Old Buckingham Road? I'm just envisioning now you've got, instead of two entrances at the junior high, you've got one entrance for those parents to get in and get out. I, I haven't been at the junior high for parent drop-off and I met, I met some other schools for parent drop-off. And, and, you know, there's a lot of coming and going in a, in a short window of time.
Right.
You know, I, I don't know what we, you know, I, I don't, I don't wanna do a turn lane, but at the same time, I don't wanna sit here and think that, you know, we're gonna, that you're gonna have a hundred cars in and out of there in fifteen minutes without some kinda traffic congestion, so.
Well, it's, it's really congested now because there's some mixing of bus traffic and car traffic. And Timmons working through their, their traffic analysis and looking at the numbers of cars and bus alignment. That's one, that's one of the big reasons to try and separate bus traffic from car traffic and another reason to try and get cars onsite as quickly as possible. So we, we haven't seen a need to add, to make any sort of improvements along Old Buckingham just because we're, we're able to get cars off that road quicker with this, with this proposed plan.
The other thing I would add to that is that we did consult with both principals in the buildings to try and get numbers of cars that are typically there for drop-off and pickup and kind of mapped out how much space we needed to try and get everybody off of Old Buckingham and into that loop as quickly as possible so it doesn't back up.
I would agree. I drive by there. I think separating the buses from the vehicle is gonna be a big part of it. Because as I drive by there, there's an officer directing and ship, you know, people in and out at times. And there is the mixing of traffic with buses and cars. That seems to be the big hindrance. Of course, if they hang a left and they go into the middle school or Kokonos Elementary School, it creates a nightmare right there at thousand and two and, and sixty anyway. And that's a whole separate issue in itself, so.
It is, it is a legitimate issue to raise though, is that will VDOT require a turn lane with this amount of traffic? Because we require it sometimes when we have businesses being built, which have fewer cars going into it than this does in a short period of time. So at least put it on the table for somebody to look at if it helps.
I think Mr. Williams and I, when we were on the planning commission together, discussed churches one time. Had a pretty heavy conversation in that the congestion of traffic early in the morning and, and when they get out of the after service. And when you add, VDOT looked at it as vehicle trips per day and you divide it out, it never triggered a turn lane warrant. But intuitively, just as Palatan Community Church deals with every Sunday, they have an officer out there directing traffic. So the intensity of it, you know, maybe five days a week might trigger, but I, I would let VDOT be the ones. And I'm sure Timmons has done enough traffic work. They'll, they'll guide us through that process, so.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. What is the plan if there is a traffic crash at the route of ingress or egress for either of these two parking areas in front of these schools? If it shuts down that single access point, what do you then do?
Well, the width, the width of those openings is three-car width. It's about forty feet wide. So if there is a disabled vehicle or a crash, then there is sufficient width for traffic to continue to, to, to exit the site.
Around a vehicle that's been involved in the crash?
Right.
With some help maybe?
That's, that's just, I would just suggest that that does present a bit of a challenge because drivers are traditionally reluctant to drive around a vehicle that's in the center of an intersection that's involved in the crash. And that's, that's kinda the benefit, if, if there was one to the traffic layout previously of these two plans, was that there was two routes of ingress and egress from both of those parking areas.
Correct.
That's just a thought that I would ask. And I, I did have another question if I could. On your second slide, the one that you have up there now, you've laid out a count of the number of parking spaces?
Correct.
And I've had several people talk to me and express, I suppose, just a, a concern or a question. Mr. Melton is exactly correct in what he said earlier that, that building, and Mr. Tucker as well, that building is used quite frequently after hours on the weekends for various kinds of activities. And Dr. Jones is right, our associations take, they, they use that quite frequently for lacrosse, sports programs inside of our building. Are, are we in fact at least keeping the same number of parking spaces? We're not losing spaces? Because the only concern I have is when I look at this, there's lots of existing parking areas now that appear to go away and become green areas. So our net, we are in fact having a net gain. Is that correct?
I don't know if we're having a net gain. I don't believe we're losing spaces to the amount of asphalt or that we're using new areas of asphalt a little more efficiently because we don't have a, a large bus loop now. We're able to park a large number of cars on this new bus loop.
Right, and, and I know many of us up here have, have attended those Saturday afternoon football games or lacrosse games and things. And there are many times when every bit of parking area at the junior high and even extending over into the elementary school now, they're full. There is nowhere to park and, and they're not exactly ideally situated behind that building now. I just wanted to make sure we give a consideration to the fact that we need to at least keep the number of parking spaces we have today.
Absolutely.
Take a look at that.
Yeah, we'll confirm that.
As, as a follow-up, if I could, I'd be curious, having seen the, it's a wonderful space, the, the public space, the convertible cafeteria and as, as an auditorium, if this is gonna be a community facility, what is the relative number of parking places at, at these two buildings versus the high school, which is, you know, obviously heavily used? Are we at fifty percent, eighty percent? I'd, I'd like to know that number. And as a possible suggestion to alleviate Mr. Walter's concerns, you can still keep one ingress egress point for the parent drop-off loop where you have designated as seventy-six spots. But if you were to connect the asphalt from the, the left-hand edge of that to the bus entrance, but put removable barriers so that they, you know, in, in normal use, they're, you can't go through.
Right.
But if there were an accident that disabled that one entrance, someone could go pull the barriers out and then the cars could get out a different way.
We do that very often for fire lanes and it could be when we begin the site plan review process. That, that, that may be something that's, that's not only recommended but required and that's something we may go ahead and, and, and show in advance of that. Because I think you could do that at both the elementary school, connecting that and also at the middle school.
Yeah, it looked like about ten feet of grass, but if, you know, just a quick connection.
You can absolutely do that and drive some, some.
Thank you.
At the high school, we have the gates that open and close, the metal gates that open and close and several.
Right, and I'm thinking about the, the, the barriers that prevent you from going around the backside of the school from the front parking lot that, I think they're just cylinders that you can pull out.
Right. Yeah, we use those. They're at the high school right now and they're very effective to block traffic.
Is, is this gonna be one-way, this bus loop, or is it two ways? How, how does it, or does it make any difference at this point?
Well, it's two, it's, it's two ways. It's in and out down the north-south road and then buses circulate around the bus loop behind. So it's, it's, and it's, and it's wide enough so that if a bus were to break down, a bus could, could get by as well. So we've got width for.
And part of that is, is I envisioned that when parking lots get full, people are gonna park along those driveways.
Right.
Is there gonna be room if people park along the driveways for, for people to get in, to get through? I mean, or, or do we designate one side as a parking side and one side as a no parking side? So you've got room to get in and out. That's just, you know, even at the old school and it gets overflowed, you know, when you get overflowed, they park in the bus loop in the front of the school.
Right, right now, the hundred and ten cars is just in board. It's just where the buses are shown right now. And it's twenty-eight to thirty-two feet of width around the perimeter. So it's conceivable in really heavy nights, you could have cars park, you know, nose to tail and still have enough room for one-way traffic around. But those parking counts don't factor any of that sort of overflow. We're trying to keep that sort of pure parking area designated within the bus loop to allow two-way traffic. But it's certainly enough room for thirty, forty, fifty more. Uh, but it's certainly enough room for 30, 40, 50 more cars around the perimeter to park parallel and have one-way traffic around.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, um, I've brought up before about the parking. It, it really is a big issue in this county at schools traditionally. And as I said at other meetings, it really needs to be looked at. The green is very nice and it's very pretty. But like, um, people have said this evening, we need to have enough spaces so we don't have people parking on Old Buckingham. You know, at events at, for instance, Pocahontas Elementary, you're, you're parking, as Mr. Cole said, you, you, you park on one side of the, of the drive of the road to the school. And then you have only one lane for people to go in and out. So parking is a real big problem. And I really think that, um, we want to be proactive. We want to be spending our money wisely and, and doing it from the get-go rather than going back and asking for more money to make what we want for efficient parking, for, um, school events as well as the public events. So I, I really would like to see more of that.
Yeah, one, one thing I'd add is, as a planner, as a past planner, I would encourage that if you, if you, maybe you're concerned or if the concern, it shows the concern that you need more parking, that there'd be something done to maybe make some of that additional parking be low, low impact development type of parking versus a sea of asphalt.
Right.
Uh, so you, you better manage the water runoff and things like that, that you have an overflow parking area. And that, maybe that overflow parking area, if you choose to add those, are low impact development type of parking versus a sea of asphalt, so.
Great, great suggestion. Can you, can you look into that?
We can.
I mean, will you, please look into that because.
We will, we will go back and make sure that we have as much parking as we have at the current facility. Um, and if we don't, we can certainly, there's, we've taken some asphalt up, uh, again, in an effort to help with stormwater management and as well as aesthetics. But if we need to go back and put those lots back in to bring it up to the right number, then we can certainly look at that.
I think, I think the new, the new term being used is sheeting of water.
Right.
Sheet, we want you to sheet water now versus put in a ditch and move it along. So I'll leave that up to you engineers.
But one of the things we're struggling with, uh, I think the entire design profession is struggling with some, are the new stormwater regulations and what's impervious, impervious materials. And, um, even temporary gravel parking lots now, you have to treat the water. They, the, the DCR treats that as, um, as impervious. So products, products come on board, you know, whether they're grass papers or those kind of things. There's still this kind of transition about this, are those impervious or, or those pervious materials? So that's something that we're starting, you know, we can certainly look at and, and have Timmons investigate.
I'm sure you're getting a lot of guidance from, from above, you know, which we understand is not taking place.
Right.
One additional question if you could, and, and it's just, I see Mr. Sneed was in here a minute ago. Is he still here? He's going, there he is. At the high school, we discovered much to our chagrin after we built the building that we didn't have as good a delivery access as we should, as we needed to have, either at the front door or at the band room door. So just keep that in mind. I know Mr. Sneed will stay on top of it. Make sure that he can get his, uh, whatever vehicle up close to his band room so he can load and unload his equipment. But the same thing, you know, in terms of unloading stuff at the front door, at the front office or, you know, wherever it's designated as place, if it's, if it's three mile, if it's 300 or 400 feet away from where it needs to go, maybe want to just think about that as you're, as you're thinking. You know, Mr. Tibbs knows, he's been at the high school. He knows the, the, the inherent difficulties of unloading at the loading dock, which is probably 1,000 feet from where it needs to go in front, at the front room, front door, so.
We definitely keep this in mind.
Could I say, uh, last meeting, I did ask for you to put in how many cars there are in our parking spaces. So I did want to say thank you for doing that. And so I'll expect something different now about this, what did you call that, Mr. Melton?
Low impact development.
Low impact development at the next meeting. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions on the site plan? We'll move into the building briefly. Doug talked a little bit about the, the decision, the, the process of how we've arrived to this point and some of the decision-making factors from option B to option E. And again, the, the red line doesn't show up on the screen, so I'll try and describe it vertically. Uh, just walking through the floor plan real quick. What really emerged from the design process too was, again, trying to establish a clear divide from public spaces and, and academic spaces so that we can cordon off the building efficiently after hours for public use. So that's, we've got this main corridor between the media center and the, and the gym, the dining performance space. Uh, we can easily cordon that half of the building off. We've got two, two large banks of toilets and just have that half of the building open after hours without public access back into the academic areas. That's one thing that's very important as well. Um, we've got, obviously, kitchen and band on the exterior edge, so to address those delivery issues. So we fully expect, yeah, set of double doors and easy grade access for band, for, for loading and loading of equipment as well as, Doug's got the mouse, that's good. Uh, as well as deliveries for the kitchen as well. Uh, one, one thing that we've been very conscious of is trying to utilize the, the parts of the building that can remain, which are mainly the gym and the vocational wing. So we're trying to use those spaces efficiently so that, that we can be very aware of cost in terms of, uh, alignment of walls and trying to repurpose spaces. Uh, so there are lots of spaces within the vocational wing. Lots of large spaces within the existing vocational wing that, that really lend themselves well for the tech lab and act shop and art rooms and those sorts of things. Uh, so that, that end of the building became very much an elective focused, um, uh, part of the building. Again, the media center anchoring the courtyard. We've got very clearly defined grade houses with the sixth grade in the rear of the building, uh, seventh grade, uh, along that L-shaped corridor. And then we'll talk about the rest of it as we go upstairs. Uh, I, back to security and passive supervision, we've got, um, a security vestibule up front. Uh, we'll have an entry protocol as you enter into the building so that the ability to lock the front doors or have the second set of front doors locked and having everybody after, after school starts come into the office, get verified, get checked in before they enter to the school. It's very standard practice throughout the whole country right now. So we'll certainly be having those security measures. Uh, we've got designated within each grade house a conference work, as, uh, assistant principal area.
Excuse me, excuse me, is, when you were talking about the security, you mean between the administration and the clinic area?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that where that is?
Yes.
Because we had talked, if you don't mind me saying, we had talked about security and how we want to make sure that that's done correctly in the beginning of the buildings, uh, front of the building, so we don't have to go back and do, um, like you said, it's the state of the art now to do it now. Some of our schools, we didn't.
Thanks. Back to sort of the passive supervision, security piece. We've got, uh, in each grade house, you have a conference workroom. We'll have an assistant principal office as well. Then I'll anchor corridors so an administrator can leave that space and be able to supervise, uh, class transitions between grade periods and so forth. So we've got those located throughout the building as well. I guess we can go upstairs. Uh, we've got all the spaces that need access to the stage, band, chorus, an ensemble down a dedicated, uh, music corridor with access to the, to the rear of the stage. Uh, that's, that's great for convenience for performances and practice on stage. It also helps to contain noise away from the other academic functions of the building. Upstairs, the continuation of the seventh grade grade house and then that conference work area anchoring that corridor. And then the northwest corner of the, of that plan, we've got the conference work area for the eighth grade and the balance of the eighth grade grade house upstairs as well. And throughout the country and certainly throughout the Commonwealth, there's a big, uh, emphasis on technology and STEM. Um, we've got anchoring the back corridor of the upstairs, the seventh and eighth grade science classrooms surrounding a STEM lab. We see that being a very technology-rich area, a lot of area for collaboration between students. Oh, sorry. So we think this is going to be a very exciting, uh, spot for education and for collaboration and for the use of technology as well. Any questions on the floor plan before we get into some building images?
Yes, sir, I have one. The dining area?
Yes.
Right now, it's claustrophobic as can be. And I know that's part of the building, you're using existing structure as best as you can. What happens to the ceiling in the dining area? And I know, I'm assuming it's going to be higher because there's a stage in there?
Correct. Uh, the building demolition is going to stop at the gym wall proper. So those locker rooms behind that will come down. So where the new dining room is going to be is actually new construction.
Okay.
We'll have that, a higher space. Uh, we've had a lot of discussions about the need for performance art space. But it's very uncommon for middle schools to have auditoriums. So we've, we've worked creatively with the design committee and Eric and his staff to come up with a very flexible space. One of the, the big words in the world was flexibility, to have a, have a dual-purpose space. So the dining room will function both as a dining room, a nice open area space. And we're also going to treat it acoustically for it to be a performing arts space after hours. So we'll have not just chairs on the floor, but actually retractable, uh, auditorium seating that can retract up against the wall when it comes down. It's, uh, actual auditorium seating. We have seating for about 400 in that bank of seats and then loose chairs for another 200 seats.
Is that the type that has kind of a riser built in?
Yes, correct.
Nice.
Um, and that's, that's, that seems to kind of hit the sweet spot between having a, a dining space as well as performing art space. And it's going to be something that's very unique to Palatine County. And it's going to be, I think, a fantastic space for not only the students but also the public to use.
Great, thanks.
Any other floor plan questions?
Do we have, um, do we have any images of that space that you can show?
Yes, we, we did at another meeting, yeah, so.
I looked later in the book.
I think it's later in the book.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Later in the book.
But it's on a.
I'm already on the numbers when we roll.
We do, it's on, we, can we come back to that? We have another presentation. Uh, we've had those kind of behind the, we can come back to that.
That'd be great.
I think it's in a, hold on, flash drive of mine. Yeah, I'll pull that out. When you start talking, roll when I. So we'll come back to that because we do have some images.
I thought we did.
Yeah. So barring any other, uh, questions, we'll get into some images. We've got, um, animation that, uh, hopefully we'll start. It shows kind of a sequence of the, the demolition of the areas to, to be demolished and then some of the new construction.
Are these tinsors?
Yes.
Those are the existing tinsors.
Is this the existing?
Yes.
That's the bus loop. That's where buses used the stage. It's scary back there.
Now see that extra green right there? See, I, I think we could kind of push that together, that green, and make up another row of parking if we had to.
Standing area that'll be on a plane, maybe back over here or something.
So there'd be room for, um, outdoor classroom in there if people wanted to, if teachers wanted to take their classes?
Absolutely. So that's the video. Just, we've got a series of five or six images, just some, some, highlight some of the spaces. And then we'll, Doug will come up and then we'll reload afterwards some of the dining room spaces. Uh, just some of the front door spaces. Um, we're trying to take color cues from the existing materials on the building to remain. Um, so we're trying to extract some colors and some flexible color from, from those to start to generate, uh, some of the images and materials for the, the new construction. So that, the idea is that when we leave the finished product, project, it looks like one unified building. It doesn't like an addition and a renovation. It's like a middle school. These are some images of the, the media center. The media centers today are becoming more like student centers. They're not very quiet spaces. Uh, they're places for kids to go make things. Kids, places for kids to go do some quiet study group. And we've had lots of really dynamic discussions with the media center folks, uh, with the school system about having some nice, comfortable seating. Less stagnant classroom spaces in the media center of the old was, you go in and there are two designated classroom spaces out of stale wood. Um, this is, uh, much more modern, much more, I'd guess, tuned to the current education and the way kids want to interact. So we try to make those very light and airy and dynamic spaces for, uh, for, for kids to use. You know, during their, their school day, before school, maybe a little bit of the time after school. And, uh, and again, to have it be a flexible space so that if PTA wanted to meet there after hours, it's a comfortable space for them to meet in as well.
Oh, that's great. Thank you for thinking of the PTA.
It's, it's important to have spaces for those, for, for those groups to, to have available to them after hours.
And then extra outlets for devices, you know, a lot of charging will be going on.
Yes.
So we want to make sure we have enough now so we don't have to, um, you know, incur that expense later.
Charging stations, you know, where you all get to one-to-one at some point in the future or where the kids bring their own devices, charging stations should be throughout the building. And, and a lot of the furniture nowadays in media centers has charging integrated into the furniture. So as kids sit there and, and do their homework, they can plug their device in, get some power. Uh, we plan to have an area of charging as well inside the dining room for, uh, for some high seating along that common wall with the corridor so kids can kind of like have subway seating and, and plug their device in as well. So charging's going to be throughout the building. Last image of the media center, this is a multimedia lab, a very functional, flexible space that's looking back into the media center proper. Lots of discussion nowadays in 21st century education about collaboration and where students can collaborate, where teachers can collaborate. And there are kind of two trainings of thought. And I think the, the train of thought that came out of the design workshop is a much, much more flexible and practical way to approach collaboration. Uh, these spaces are, are being built throughout the state. There might be some extended corridor spaces that are kind of in open, maybe loud areas. Uh, there was a definite, uh, direction from the design committee about wanting some flexible space for small group work, for, uh, places for kids who need some remedial help, kids who are accelerated who need some, some small group work. Um, to have these spaces open and full of glass, but also behind glass walls so that there is some intimacy, there's some quiet, uh, places and then not just outside of the middle of a corridor. And also provides these, uh, these areas so that it can be much more flexible. So not only for student use, but for teacher collaboration, departmental meetings, those kind of things. So this is just an early image of what one of these spaces might look like. Again, these kind of anchor corridors as well to the teacher, of a group of teachers having, uh, say, a department meeting or some, uh, planning period work. Uh, there's still the element of passive security. So it's glass on both sides so that as classes are changing, anything's going on, there's still passive security should teachers be occupying those spaces. And the last image, I believe, is of the gymnasium.
So, so just for clarity, we're using the existing gymnasium, but it's modified some and, uh, a lot, basically. Uh, so the seat, the, the seating for the spectators is on one side, the coaches and the players on the other side.
Correct.
And behind that, if you look at it, is locker room.
Locker room, that's right.
Okay.
We're, we're trying to, to, again, be efficient about that space. Again, it's a high school-sized gymnasium. We're trying to size it more to, more appropriate to the middle school. Trying to take advantage of the footprint and the volume that's there within that space and try and make it a proper, state-of-the-art middle school gymnasium and then capture some of that space to put locker rooms as well instead of having to build new square footage.
You would address the, the stuff on the ceiling, I guess, at that time?
Yes, absolutely. So with that, I'll turn it back to Doug and let him talk about enrollment.
One of the things we've done is, um, as I mentioned, when we did a facility study, it was 2013 projections and the first, um, projections that we, we did 2016, 19, 22, and 25. So we went out 10 years. Well, now we're almost to that 216. And, um, what we have shown here are, in the first, um, column, 2013, those were the actual numbers. So you'll see the enrollment on the left-hand column. And this is in our current grade configuration of K4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 12. Uh, so you can see 400 and, uh, 4,225. And we have capacity for 5,300. Uh, so we've got available space in 2013 of 1,075. At that time, we were projecting in 2016, you can see the enrollments. Again, this is the old grade alignment of 4,088, still with a capacity of 5,300. And on the last, um, set of information is the actual numbers from 15, 16, so September 30 numbers, that show an increase over what we projected three years ago. show an increase over what we projected three years ago. Increase of about 129 students from the 2013 study projected what we were going to have as opposed to what we've had. So we have more students than what we were projecting in 2013. About a 5.2% increase. So why is that? Two factors that we look at in doing projections. There's been a 25% increase in live birth to kindergarten survival ratios. That is, when, when a kid is born in five years, how many of those kids show up in your school system? Is that 1.0, 1.2, or 0.8? Cohort survival, so that's the terminology they use. So that's a very, very important factor as we look to trends in enrollments. Second thing we look for is from kindergarten to fourth grade, how many of those kids that started in kindergarten are still showing up in your fourth grade? And that has increased 10% since 2013. So.
Can we pause here for a second?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, so having said on the committee that we kind of, Mr. Tipp was there, and we think much dialogue went into the, and your expert, I forget his name, did a great job of trying to explain birth rates and how it filtered into years later. So what you're telling us is the data that we had then, when this, when we got all of this information, has already changed.
It's changed.
And, and so you've had a 25% increase in the birth to kindergarten survival ratios and a 10%. And then you projected that out, I'm skipping ahead a little bit on the pages. So we still have capacity in 2025.
Correct.
Of course, the projections we had then were 2030, but this is taking it back to 2025.
Right. And then, so this, this is, the second, you kind of stole my thunder there a little.
Well, hey, I missed.
The next slide, we've realigned them now.
I think he's a high achiever. I think he's trying to get.
We've realigned the grades now to show what, where we're headed. K5, 6, 8, 9, 12. So you see your capacity has actually decreased slightly because we're building a 1,200-student middle school. We're taking two schools out. But you can again see by 2025, these are the new projections based on the, the current information and going back to the trends and projecting them forward, that in 2025, we still have 480-spot capacity. You can also see your elementaries in 10 years are beginning to feel a little, a little pain. Now, again, we have given you, we've given the school division essentially the spreadsheet that allows you to update this every year, to take your, your new September 30 numbers, your new birth rate numbers, and project those forward. And that is something you need to do every year because, and Carl Chafin, our guru, will sit and tell you, he said, "I'm never going to be right." I might be slightly under, I might be slightly over, and, and things change. So it's something you really have to look at every year. But we have, we feel comfortable with where we are and where we're headed forward now.
And I.
So, so my next question would be, we heard many times in that meeting, especially from the high school principal, that working at a capacity of, and I can't remember what it was, 95% or 90% capacity of a school was cumbersome and really wasn't ideal. So if you use that number, it's 90% capacity of 2185, you're already over capacity in your elementary school almost in 2022.
Plus, that's correct. And I would.
Is it 90% or is it 95%?
Well, it's 90, it's 90% at the secondary level, just because the kids are changing classes every period. So you're not able to utilize the spaces as efficiently. Elementary, you can get closer to 95, 96% at the elementary level. But one of the things, and we just got these updated numbers in the last couple days, and one of the things that Ms. Wyler and I spoke about this morning when we met, or this afternoon when we met, is in looking at these numbers, it's not in this CIP, but something that is looming on the horizon is possibly the need for another elementary school, at least planning for that and putting that to be thinking about down the road as you begin to keep an eye on these numbers. Because again, this is a snapshot, and we know that building permits are going up. We know that development is, is starting to increase, and there's a lot of pent-up demand of people who want to be in Powhatan. So it's just something that we need to keep an eye on.
So this again shows a comparison of, the trends are essentially very close to what they were in three years ago. It's just been accelerating. So you can see, as you remember, we were dipping, we were showing that continuing dip, and it really has kind of leveled off. But then we've kind of got another little dip in 16, and then it increases out and essentially crosses back over the line in, in 2023. So the projections are really not that far off in, in the long term. It's just happening at a different rate. So in talking, in taking that information now, let's start by benefits to starting construction now. As you recall, that one of the real advantages of doing this project in the timing that we're talking about is you currently, number one, you have capacity in your elementary schools to move your fifth grade back into the elementary schools, which is a more traditional lineup of K through 5. And that's, that holds true through 2025, and that's when you begin to feel the pressure. We now, because of that capacity available, particularly at Pocahontas Elementary and the capacity at Powhatan Middle School, we're able to move all six, all three grades, 6, 7, and 8, into most of Powhatan Middle, and some of them are occupying a bit of a wing at Pocahontas Elementary. So that, without any portable trailers. And that is a rarity. And when you look at most systems that have to put 10 or 20, or in some cases 40 trailers out temporarily for two years in order to do a project like you're talking about, that's a huge advantage educationally and cost-wise to not have to go through that. At some point, you're going to lose that window. As those numbers start to go up, you're going to start to look at having to have trailers and that sort of thing. So there's cost and schedule savings in both construction and in renovation of an unoccupied building.
I have a question, please.
Yes.
Over here. Do you know about what it would cost Powhatan to have one trailer? And then I can do the math on how many and all that.
I would, I would tell you what I, what I know, and Russell may be able to help me, but essentially it's about $50,000 to put a trailer on the ground.
Okay.
And that's usually at a lease. So by the time the lease is over, the trailer's not worth a whole lot of money.
Yeah.
But then you've got hookups.
Yeah, I was going to say bathroom, steward.
And you gotta bring the intercom system and the fire alarm system and the data system. And so.
To me, this is really important because we have some tough financial decisions to make when it comes to paying for this building. And part of what I would like is some kind of, I don't know, approximate dollar number of how much we're saving by not having to have trailers. And if for some reason we had to have trailers, you know, how many if we went a year out or two years out or whatever? You can see where I'm going with this. I'm, I'm trying to make a financial decision as everybody else is here. I would love to go at lightning speed and everything, but I would just like to know my options there. Is there a way we can do that? Work up numbers?
True. But I would also say, you, you would not need trailers now from a capacity standpoint.
Right.
You have capacity. I think what's looming, and this is the elephant in the corner, is you've got some major maintenance issues coming on your junior high school and, and your middle school.
No doubt about it. I would just like to be able to tell the constituents in my district, here's the cost if you wait.
Right.
And that would include those trailers. And here's the cost if we do it now. I think those numbers will speak very plainly and loudly.
Okay.
But I don't have that number. So if I could get, just for one trailer, and then I can say, hey, if we have 10, if we have 20, we have 30, I'll, I'll do the math out.
Right.
Thank you.
We get.
Mr. Westmoreland, may I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
You brought this up last time about the 5% of construction inflation rate. The Fed, with quantitative easing, has been trying to get inflation, you know, for some years, and hasn't had much luck. Yet, construction, according to your presentation, is at 5%. What goes into that?
Well, we, we track, as, as you may or may not be aware of, Mosley does about 40% of the new schools in the state of Virginia in, in.
I'm aware of your reputation.
And so we, we track inflation numbers very, very quickly. When we talk about inflation, we're talking about construction inflation. So that is tied somewhat to the recession. And if you look at the graph, we saw huge spikes down, I mean, 20%, and then we saw huge spikes up at 30, 30%. So, but that trend line, if you look at the last eight years, is 5% construction. So what we're saying is, as, as the economy recovers, you're going to see, I think we've, we've been coming out of an artificially deflated construction market. Now, what, what's also happened, and this is what really kind of scares us as we move forward, and that's why we say a minimum of 5%, is lots of contracting, both subcontractors and general contractors, have either gone out of business or shrunk. I would say in '07 and '08, what they're doing, they were hiring people. Well, now, they're not hiring people. They're taking less work, and, and it's really kind of constricted the contracting market. So as contracting starts picking up, it gets more competitive and those prices are, we think, have the potential of really spiking. So 5% is the minimum we would recommend of, again, it's not tied to the, whatever the national inflation rate is for all goods. It's specific to Virginia and it's specific to contracting, and it's, it's the rate that we've been seeing.
Is this just with schools or construction in general?
Well, what, what we track is purely schools. And that's, frankly, I'm not sure what it's doing in the, in the total contracting market because you've got such differences in commercial, you know, not, not a whole lot of new office buildings being built, not a whole lot of prisons being built. There's been a whole lot of higher ed built, and now, all of a sudden, there's a lot of K-12 coming back in the market. K-12 market's been pretty quiet for about five or six years, and now it's really starting to, to heat up. Does that make sense?
I'm still working through this, but yes, it, it's very helpful. Thank you.
And we can provide you some graphs that we have. It's not just Mosley projects, it's every state, every school construction project in the state that'll show these, these wild fluctuations.
But you've been tracking this, and you say you go back, you know, you know, the last five, six, seven years, and you're seeing this, or you can document, there's been on average a 5% inflation increase year over year.
Yep. And we can provide that to Dr. Jones that he can pass on.
Thank you.
Let's see. Okay, so we talked about potential maintenance costs that may become. Next steps. We have a follow-up again.
Sir, before you move on, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Pepper.
Did we not see some numbers on potential maintenance costs in one of our previous presentations?
Yes. You talked about the things that, that, I think, Mr..
Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Wilson provided us saying, hey, here are the things that are being, need to be done. Deferred maintenance, HVAC, system roof repairs.
Some of which is in the CIP that we saw earlier tonight.
Yeah, and some, and in a total for those versus, you know, a replacement or something.
So might I ask, the next time you present us, the next iteration of your report outs, that you try to capture Mr. Wilson's and your work on what that figure might be there for the last dot point? To Mr. Williams's point, the more data we have, particularly around numbers, the better it makes us feel when we have to make these decisions. Thank you, sir.
And some of it was the maintenance costs that you need to deal with in these buildings, but you may also recall an operational cost savings.
Right, right.
By the schools.
Right.
That was provided.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pepper.
So some key dates coming up, user meetings will be presented February 9. We will be here with Timmons on the 3rd to talk about the, the water situation and the options there. Bidding and award in the July, August timeframe, beginning of construction hopefully in September. And, you know, at this time, we are within our, our CIP budget. The water thing is, is a little bit of a misnomer or an unknown out there, but we feel like even at the minimum level to what it's going to do, take to accommodate, the high school can be done within that CIP number. It may take some shifting, some things around, but.
Can you repeat that, Mr. Westmoreland?
A little bit louder, right into the microphone, please.
Yes. The, at this point, what we know about the water situation, what it would take to accommodate just the high school for essentially fire suppression system. The issue is your public water system doesn't have enough capacity for the fire suppression system. And it has as much to do, maybe not necessarily with capacity, as getting it through the lines, that because of the flow rate that you have to figure by code for a sprinkler system going off at this new facility would suck the pipes dry. So that's creating.
The existing pipes.
Existing pipes. That, that in a nutshell is the issue. And I don't want to get too far into this because I'm not the civil engineer and I'm not the expert, but the water situation is an issue for this project, it's an issue for the, for the transportation building. But in the long run, and we've been working with Aqua Virginia and are engaging in conversations with them, whether or not there's some capacity of them bringing some money to the table for upgrading the public system, that, that's probably the biggest issue, is we can spend a lot of money on this project and the transportation building, and when you upgrade your water system, you can throw that money away. You know, so that, that's the baseline. So, so do we go to a higher level and, and produce something for these projects that actually can be used toward the upgrading of your water system? That's as much information that I can provide and not get myself in trouble, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Carson, this is answering your earlier point about the numbers that we got. I have that from last time. And for the benefit of everybody, option one, which was the minimum to keep the junior high school and Pocahontas Middle School operational, including roof, HVAC, et cetera, plus additional debt service, that was 21 million for option one, plus additional debt service of six and a half million. Option three, which is the new school, was 33 million. So the difference in funding was five and a half million. And the estimated annual construction inflation cost for every year of the projects delayed is $1.75 million. That gives you some ballpark.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Westmoreland, do you have, I would like to show them that performing space real quick, if you could pull that up. And just as they're pulling that up, just background, again, we've tried to have an inclusive process to listen to our stakeholders and the music and performing arts folks at the junior high and the middle school felt very strongly that they needed a space at this new school to, to perform. And we looked at the costs of an auditorium, which we know, even if it's utilized fully after school, there's still some downtime during the school day. So what we worked with is to come up with this flexible space of the, that's cafeteria most of the time, commons that can be used for large gatherings, but also could, could be a performing space, not just for school groups, but for a lot of the different community groups that want to use a space. The high school auditorium is beautiful, and, but it's also very big. And sometimes a performing arts group wants to have a space where 300 people can be there and not feel like they're being swallowed up by the auditorium. And we feel like this space could really meet that need. That's as much filler as I can do, Mr. Halsey.
So has anybody heard what the weather's supposed to be this weekend?
So this is a, this is a much earlier iteration of our dining space, but this is a dining space obviously set up for cafeteria. And then these bleacher, these, not bleachers, their seating retracts back and is tiered, and we're talking about softback auditorium-type seating that comes out. And you could supplement that to get 600 people in a performance-type space. You can see the kind of height that we have. Someone mentioned earlier about how low the existing space is. And, you know, we're talking about almost a double-height space here. And that's just another view of what that might be. The chairs on the floor are seen as the same chairs that would be used in the cafeteria seating. You have tables that you pull off into the storage area and then set this up. And there's another view. So really an excellent use of space.
And what about the acoustics?
Well, we're, we're working with acoustic engineers, and it's a, it's a challenge. But, you know, most cafeterias need some acoustic help anyway. So we'll be looking at it as trying to, to get the best balance of good acoustics in a cafeteria setting and good acoustics in a performance setting.
Well, I think we want it better in the performance.
Yeah.
Right? Don't we? I mean.
Yeah.
Any other questions at this time for Mr. Westmoreland or Mr. Halsey?
I do have one question before we end this. The one thing I saw nothing of, and I'm very late to this. The one thing I saw nothing of, and I'm very late to this process, was any sort of improved outdoor field space, and I know that that is a huge issue in this county, and it seemed like in the pictures that was the one thing that didn't change at all. So, I don't know if that's been addressed. I don't know if anybody could, could speak to that. Can we, can we squeeze in another little soccer field somewhere? Lacrosse, something, field hockey?
It's not part of the original, it's not part of the project, and we, on the county side, are looking at those fields, working with the schools, because the county uses those fields maybe more than the school does with all the leagues that we have. So, the county staff has been working very closely with Mr. Wilson, and we'll be bringing back a proposal for improvements to those fields, but a completely separate project, fields were never included in this project.
Great to know.
But we're gonna still have the original baseball and...
This project does not touch the field space, it just does the parking around that and staging for the bus loop. So, the one thing that we have done is talk about moving the tennis courts to the back, where they're there with the rest of the athletic space, and that has been shared Mary Ann, thank you.
So, we're not losing any space that we already have for athletics for the schools?
Definitely not.
So, we need to add to it.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Forward to the next time.
At this time, we'll have our second public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Seeing now we'll close the public comment period, we'll move on to board comment periods. Does anybody have a board comment period in it?
I do, Mr. Chairman. My first one was, and I see he's already left, in case he's at home watching. Is this on YouTube? In case he's at home watching, he probably had to get home to bed. But anyway, Corey Palmer was here tonight observing, because he wanted to get a Boy Scout merit badge, so he had to attend a meeting of the Board of Supervisors and/or the school board, and so I told him this would be perfect, you get both of them in one night. And then, the second thing I wanted to do was thank the school board, the school board and the Board of Supervisors and the Constitutional Officers for attending the Martin Luther King Junior Community Breakfast last Monday. I know it meant a lot to the community, the committee, and also to our community, and I would like to know, some of you have given me suggestions, and I am on the committee, and we're trying to improve it, and so if you do have more suggestions, please get them to me, so that we can keep moving this thing forward to make it even bigger and better. And thank you.
I have a couple of quick comments. Congratulations to all of you, the school board, to Dr. Jones, to the teachers, to the administrators, to the students. I understand y'all received an award, you're number two in the Richmond, Virginia area. Kudos, and so that means more kids, more people will be wanting to move here.
And play on fields.
So, we, we do, we do, I mean, that heartfelt, fantastic job. Moved here 21 years ago and moved out of the Chesterfield School System, and we had people tell us, how can you do that to your kids? The best decision we ever made, and, you know, I've got grandchildren in the school system, and some more headed there, so it's exciting to me to see you guys and your teachers and your staff and your students and everybody work so hard, achieve that, and kudos, and thank you for all y'all doing. Last thing I have is, I do echo Ms. Emel's comments. It was heartwarming to me to be in the Martin Luther King event for the fourth time, I missed the first one, and to see the, the diversity in that room, and was, was heartfelt, because I think we can be a community who embraces, you know, change, embraces diversity, and builds consensus around thought process of different ideas, and we're setting the example. And it really was a great event, and if you see the joy in the, on the young people's faces and the excitement they have, and it, it was really wonderful. And to see two young men sitting out here tonight is, is, is very, very enlightening to me, because as Mr. Williams says sometimes, we're getting old, and we're gonna slowly float off to the side, and it's gonna be your, your world to delve in, and so I applaud you guys for including them in their thought process and how, the results of what we do and how it affects the next generation, so kudos to you guys. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Harris.
I just wanna take this opportunity to thank my colleague, Ms. Emel, for working so hard at the Martin Luther King Day. She did not stop the whole day. She was like, I think she did everything. She was just amazing, so thank you so much. I think you really made the day happen.
And she drafted her whole family to work on it, too.
Yes, she did, and your husband and your children and, and his coffee, then it was the whole, so thank you so much. You did a great job. And the other person that's sitting in the audience that I am gonna encourage to run for President of the United States is Mr. Sneed, and he did a fantastic job with his band and his speech that day, and your passion is amazing, and you, you know that, I just think you're an incredible human being, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Harris.
Any other comments?
One more, actually two more. Kim, next time, I'd like cream and sugar in mine. And then, thank you very much, you were very helpful that day, and I really appreciate it, I do, I echo that. We got a big storm moving in, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't remind people, because we do live stream now. Prepare, you can get on a website like Red Cross or the various weather.coms, et cetera. Prepare in advance. If you have a true emergency, 911, please, if it's just a barking dog or something, can you save that till next weekend, because our responders will be stretched pretty thin, I have a feeling. Speaking for myself, my home number is up on the website, my email is there, you can contact me if it's non-emergency, be glad to help, and most of all, look out for your neighbors, make sure that everything looks like everything's okay next door and across the street. Thanks.
So, Pat has a couple of updates for us as board and, and the school board, and then one other comment on the climate weather, how it affect us.
If the county is closed on Monday, it is a board meeting evening, and if it is closed per your bylaws, the meeting is, is held the next, the following Monday, which would be Monday, February 1st. And so, if it's not, if, if the county is closed on Monday, the meeting will be on Monday, February 1st. And if we are open, but for some reason we decide that by that evening it's not safe to drive, the chairman will make a call, and if that meeting is canceled again, the meeting would be made up on Monday, February 1st.
Yeah, yeah, time.
The meetings are at 6:00 PM. Our meetings are at 6:00 PM, and therefore, the makeup meeting will also be at, at 6:00 PM. And I wanted to remind everyone that a week from tonight, on February 3rd, there's another joint school board, Board of Supervisors workshop, and at that meeting, we will have a presentation on the joint transportation facility from the consultants that did the design. We'll have a presentation on the radio system and on the Sally Port, also from the people that designed. And now, as Dr. Jones mentioned, Timmons will be in here to talk about the water issue for the transportation facility and for the new middle school. We'll also, if there is time, give you an update on the broadband initiative. And we have, we are presenting the CIP to you on Monday night, and we just found out new information today on school enrollment, and we may have things wrapped into the CIP to address that, but we may not, so we know that that CIP is a document that may change, as you know, as it did last year, even after it comes forward to the Board of Supervisors. We've tentatively scheduled on Wednesday, February 10th, another workshop of the Board of Supervisors, and I understand Dr. Jones will be polling the, the school board, because they're definitely welcome to come. That's when our financial advisors, Davenport, will be in here and doing an analysis of bond funding. We'll also discuss, if the board wishes, county CIP projects. We already have previously scheduled on February 17th, Wednesday, a joint school board, Board of Supervisors workshop, where again, we'll be talking about funding the CIP and the bonding process. We'll have both our financial advisors and our bond counsel here in Maguire Woods. And tentatively, we're asking the Board of Supervisors at their meeting on February 22nd to consider adoption of the CIP, consider whether or not they would want to authorize bonds, and then budgeting appropriating the bond projects, and we're doing that so that the schools will be able to follow that schedule of doing the school this year. So, we understand that there's a lot of information that we need to get to you within the next month before you can make that decision. And we had a discussion today with Dr. Jones, another reason why we are asking you to make the decision about the CIP prior to you considering your budget, is because, as Dr. Jones mentioned, in his budget, he needs to know whether or not he is budgeting for the middle school or the ju, the current junior high school being open or being closed, and does he have to budget for different transportation, depending on where students are going. So, your decision on what, when you decide to do, or if you decide to do, the new middle school impacts Dr. Jones's budget for next year, for the school board budget, which is why the process is reversed this year. Usually, you consider your budget, and then you consider your CIP. The process has been reversed, but it also has been something that we talked about last year, how we'll be bringing forward to you in January, all of the designs that you authorized us to do, so that you could be considering your CIP earlier.
Thank you, Pat. Questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Being as we're gonna be adopting the CIP before we adopt the budget, I'm just thinking out loud, you know, on issues about tax rates and things like that, when we won't have discussed that prior to adopting the CIP. That's gonna be, you know, a little bit, and I'm gonna be generous, different in how we go about that. And I understand the reasoning for doing that, so that the schools can go forward with their budget, but from the board's point of view, if we adopt a CIP and we haven't gone through the budget in its entirety and understand, you know, what it is that we want to fund, don't want to fund in relationship to all projects and the impact on the real estate tax rate, that's gonna be difficult, that's gonna be challenging.
Okay, thank you, David. I don't have the calendar in front of me to, to address, you know, that, but I, I think we're getting projections earlier than, than the 22nd, are we not?
On the 22nd, you will also receive my proposed budget.
Exactly.
And, and...
Okay, so we will have some projections and proposed budget based upon kinda the criteria we talked about in our last meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we have an opportunity to do the toggling, to be able to say if we do this later on with the adoption of budget, this is what we'd be able to afford with a given tax rate, those types of scenarios that we could go through.
I, I can answer that. I would think we would, David, and I, and I guess one of the questions we will, as we move forward over the next several weeks, would be, is, is it realistic for us to adopt a CIP on the 22nd? If it's not, then we, then we back up and we say, what is a drop-dead date? Not that I wanna kick this can down the road, because I do think we need to make the decision, and I've said that numerous times, but that we would then say, okay, is it, is it a special meeting we call to adopt CIP, or do we move it to the, to the March meeting, or whatever?
I was, I was gonna suggest to Pat to, you know, let people know what days we weren't meeting, it might have been a shorter presentation. Eric, I understand your dilemma, you know, with the budget and, and the scheduling and going forward. That, that makes sense. So, I, I understand that, but at the same time, I'm sure you have an appreciation for where we are as supervisors and the decisions that we have to make about what gets funded at what cost here in the county.
Certainly do, and we're as flex, we'll be as flexible as we certainly can and understand that there's some big decisions looming, and we're cognizant of that.
Going back to what Billy said, you know, if there's some breathing room that maybe we could extend, and I don't know how much breathing room you have, you know, where we could move that February 22nd decision, if we, we figured out we couldn't really come to the type of decisions that we needed to make on that date, and I'm not asking for an answer tonight, you know.
We do, we did have that discussion today, because we came up with the February 22nd date, which is what I emailed to the board last week, and that was based on a shovel, dirt, shovel, dirt in the shovel, or shovel in the dirt on July 1st, and we heard today, I found out this afternoon, that they would like to start construction September 1st. So, we do have a little bit of flexibility. The September, the February 22nd date was what we had worked with, with our bond counsel is what we would need to do in order to have it be ready to start construction in July. So, we, we do have a little bit of room, and I'll be, now that I have this additional information, working with bond counsel, and potentially, we may be able to move that out to the last meeting in March for adoption of the CIP.
It'd be helpful, Pat, if we had, you know, after we meet with Davenport, we have what we had last year, where we looked at, you know, the different scenarios with, you know, the impact of financing, what we would finance and what would be the impact, you know, on the budget and the real estate tax rate. So, that type of information would be helpful.
Right, we, we've, you've asked for that, and we've already had those discussions with Davenport, and Davenport is preparing that. And the CIP that I present next Monday, we'll be reminding you of the eight different financing scenarios that, that you did go through, and I think you all remember that the very last one that you had, which, I don't remember the numbers now, I think it was a DA or DB or something, but that one did have, did use one cent of the tax rate for the projects. So, I just wanted to remind you all that, but we'll go through that next Monday, so.
Perfect.
Mr. Chairman, let me get some clarification on something, and, and trying to respect all positions on this. Whether we start construction in September or, or July, I don't think is, is the issue. The school board in developing a budget needs to know whether we're developing that budget for a new middle school or the old junior high school and Pocahontas Middle School to be in service, and our budget still has to be developed and approved, I think, around by the end of March. So, I don't know that the construction date slipping really factors into, you know, when all these decisions have to happen.
Hear you. And we hear you, and we can understand, and so if we work through this, these meetings and calendar we have, I think we'll, we'll try to be as forthright in, in getting good data and the data we need to roll our sleeves up, make a decision, and it's gonna be important.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't think we're gonna drag our feet.
No, we're not, we're not dragging our feet. Going to Mr. Conker's point, I know he wants information, you know, but we want information as well, such that we can make good decisions, because this is not something that you enter into lightly. We're talking about a lot of money that's in the CIP, and now, you know, as recently as a couple of board meetings ago, it was brought to our attention that we needed more fields, and, you know, the prospect of, you know, Fighting Creek Park Phase Two. You can rest assured, that's not gonna go away. So, we've got, in my opinion, more needs than realistically, we've got tax dollars and how we're gonna fund everything, and we're gonna have to figure out how we fund these things in a fashion which is prudent, that we are moving forward, we are addressing needs, but we have to do it in a fiscally responsible manner. So, I understand where you're coming from, Jim. If I was sitting in your seat, yes, I'd like all the information I could get in a decision just as soon as possible. I'm in the other seat, where I've got all these other things that I've gotta consider and try to figure out and divine, you know, how we're gonna go forward, not this year, but over the next five years, and we plan for how we're gonna finance and fund these projects.
And I think we prioritize these needs as a group back in March. ...as a group back in March of last year. So, it's, I don't think we, we're not reinventing the wheel here. It's just a matter of, I think I, I have the utmost confidence that Pat is asking the right questions of Davenport, and that we've, we've kind of asked the right questions. And so, when we, you know, get our data, we'll roll our sleeves up and, and ask the right questions and make, make a good informed decision. So...
Mr. Chairman, David, if it helps, this is probably how the bus garage got delayed for 28 years. Just throwing that out there. I have one more thing.
Well, Matt, let me respond to that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I don't think that was the way the bus garage got delayed for 28 years, to be perfectly candid. And I'm not going to go into the details on that one, but...
I'm just being humorous. Priorities is the word, priorities. And every county would like to fund every need. And, you know, you're going to have crowds of people for this cause and that cause, and that's the way it should be. But it's our job to determine priorities. And it's, I, well said, David.
I have one more thing. And I, I know everybody wants to go buy their bread and milk and eggs and make French toast next week.
Too late.
But hey, we're...
By the way, for drinking water, you can melt the snow. Just bringing that up. You
don't have to buy out the shelves. Anyway, I went to a very interesting site today that I think everybody should know about. We're one of the three counties in the Commonwealth that's putting in solar panels. And I met with, down in the Hopewell area, I met with a representative from Dominion and one from Virginia Solar. And I actually toured, walked the solar panel field. And I was paying attention to a few things specifically because of some citizen concerns. One was wildlife. And they very much eased my fears there through fencing and mowing grass program that they do to keep the grass weighed down, et cetera. And the safety of the solar panels themselves. They don't get that hot. I actually felt them myself. So, there's no danger that anybody's going to get burned or, you know, wildlife are going to get burned or anything like that. There is one facility in California where that is an issue. So, but don't confuse it. This is not that type. Also, environmental. We talked about grading of the ground and runoff off of these solar panels and what kind of chemicals, leach and that kind of thing. We had a discussion about that, and they set my fears kind of at rest there. There's really nothing in any quantifiable significance that's going to be an environmental issue there, it looked to me. Also, the construction, the noise of construction and the noise post-construction as these panels operate. During construction, I looked at the piles that they'll have to use a pile driver on. They're relatively small. And there's not much noise as they hydraulically push them in. Then there's a little bit of hammering as they do the final tap in. The bolts that they use are actually done by hand, because they've got these digital meters on them that give them the right amount of torque. So, they might initially put some on with a battery operated wrench or power drill with an attachment. But very, very little noise. You couldn't hear it 100 yards away. And like I said, the, the actual tightening is done by hand, so there'll be no noise. So, I was relieved at the construction noise end of it. These panels are about as big as this table where we're sitting. They weigh 35 pounds. I lifted one up myself today. So, we're not talking about heavy equipment having to put these in place. The nuts and bolts are about as big around as my pinky, no bigger. So, no, it's not going to sound like a NASCAR pit stop, is what I'm saying, all over the field. It's much quieter than that. And then lastly, when it's in operation, their field, it's down by the Philip Morris facility down there, theirs are static. They, they get what they get from the sun. Ours will actually be moving. So, they will track at sunrise and move all day long till sunset, return to a neutral position. And then when the sun comes up, they'll, you know, continue that cycle. Those motors are DC motors. And if you know anything about DC motors, they're, they're very quiet. The power itself feeding out of these panels is DC. They go through a transformer. There are some fans on those. They could not be heard from the parking lot adjacent to the, to the facility. They put those in the middle of the entire facility. And they, they feed the cables into where these, this equipment with fans is located. And then they run a line back out to the power grid, basically. So, I was very impressed with the facility. And pretty much all of the questions I had were answered to my satisfaction, I think to the satisfaction of citizens that have been asking some questions about this. So, I'm, I'm very encouraged by this project.
So, you're ready to vote on this tonight?
Soon as we discuss the bus garage, I'm ready.
Just for clarity purposes, this has not been approved by the Board of Supervisors. It has been approved by Planning Commission.
Right.
It has not been approved by the Board of Supervisors.
It's on the agenda Monday night.
It will come to us on Monday night. The last thing I'll add is, we did ask in this that there be a place, and Dr. Jones has met with Bill Cox from District Four Planning Commission, an opportunity for the schools to come visit it for a learning experience. And I think it was a wonderful opportunity to be provided to them. So, but it has not been passed by the board. And we're not voting on it tonight, David. Thank you.
No, we're not.
We just want to make sure that's on the record. So...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
Please.
I have motion to adjourn. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Motion for the school board to adjourn.
I'm in.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.